We're here. I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission's special meeting of March 8th, 2024, casual Friday edition. This meeting is being held both in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I'll call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Leonard?
Here.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Smith?
We're here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Hill?
Here.
You have a quorum.
And who would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Chris Frost.
Who?
Chris Frost.
Oh, Chris Frost, there he is, yeah, good. You know how it goes.
Hand over your heart, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a second?
As staff recommends, I second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And may I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 29th, 2024.
Okay, new public hearings, do we have, I don't have any speakers, oh, I do. How about that?
Got a bunch.
These are for the item, right, I don't have any, no general comments, okay.
Do we have staff comments?
Commissioner comments?
We traditionally don't have public comments.
Correct, so the-
At the special meeting.
Right, so the special meeting, the rule is, the only thing that you can comment on are the agenda items, because there is only one item, we figured we would dispense of that, but I guess if the chair would like to take public comment now, they can only comment on one thing, that is his prerogative, but I would advise against that, there's only one item, and let's just move ahead.
Will your commission comment?
Well, if commissioners have something they want to say briefly, I would not want to stifle that. John, did you-
Is that legal?
That, of course, it is the majority of, I mean, the will of the commission, I would advise to keep it brief, it is a special meeting, but up to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, John. Keep it brief.
I watched the February 26th city council meeting and I was appalled by what the city council said. We had one commissioner, I mean, council member who I support, call us tone deaf, tone deaf. We had, we had a meeting, we had two meetings, we had a meeting that was unanimous, we spent hours, and obviously, he did not watch it. We're not tone deaf, and the procedure is, go to appeal if you don't like what we say. But to call us tone deaf and to have us work, come in and do special meetings and spend many, many hours working on this, and say, and not even watch the meeting, because you could not have said we were tone deaf, when, as you all know, five of us get together and agree on something, rare, okay?
So, this is just about the item already, right?
No, the second item is, we had another commissioner, I mean, council member, say that we didn't give a fair hearing to the TUP ordinance, because we continued to get more information, even though the city council recommended we consider 15 days and they came in with 75, okay? Another tone deaf person who doesn't watch meetings, and I resent it, because we work hard and they don't. Now, to come in and say we're tone deaf and-
Mr. Chair, and I apologize, Mr. Vice Chair, I understand there's some frustration, I just want to be sure that any comments about the item tonight are held for that, and with that-
Well, this is a general comment on, on not the meeting tonight, and so, if council members want to criticize us, they should at least watch a meeting, if they want to criticize us about safety, they should at least know something about it, which apparently they don't, and I, I just want to state that we work hard, we try our best, there's a process, it goes to appeal, but nobody's going to call me tone deaf for not doing work, and that's just the way I feel, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, John. I do want to mention one thing, this is something, a question, do we want to agendize an item? So, this would be a yes/no question on, one of us got a little grief for suggesting that attending in-person meetings is preferable to calling in via Zoom, and, and it is true that the public has an equal right to participate either way, and I think we should continue Zoom as an option for a variety of reasons, but I wonder if it would be legal for us to make a special rule that says if you're an applicant, you need to show up in person? In terms of the constitutionality, I don't think there's any protected class in play, so the standard would just be, is there a rational basis to make that kind of discrimination for that exception? And the rationale is that we need to be interactive with applicants, we, you know, hand gestures, nodding heads, data to be shown, things to be displayed, in a way that we don't necessarily need to be interactive with just members of the public calling in. Could we agendize making a discussion about that kind of a rule?
My first comment on that is that I would defer to our city attorney on that, but I think it's, a lot of context is lost when somebody comments on one of our meetings and all we're hearing is a voice and we don't have a face. I think that there's a lot of things that can be recognized, I just want to start out by saying I really appreciate a handful of people that are here tonight, and I think that we can better get some of our answers, some of the questions that we have sometimes answered that way. I know that my experience on the city council, the majority of it was prior to Zoom, and that always seemed to be very helpful, and at that time, people were not able to call in and make comments over Zoom or something like that, so I would, again, defer to the city attorney, but, you know, my two cents for any applicant out there would be that you're better off being in the room.
Now, we're not having the discussion tonight, it's only a question of, can we agendize it?
I just want to mention one thing, we had an applicant write a formal complaint letter, the MRCA, who was the applicant for not being recognized on Zoom, okay? Now, here we have an applicant who says I couldn't tell.
I actually don't think that that's entirely accurate.
It's not relevant to our present purposes.
So, let's, the MRCA, MRCA letter, excuse me, will be addressed, as required, to your discreet question, Chair Hill.
Is this something we could plausibly agendize, talking about making a special rule for applicants?
I mean, sure, of course, anything could be put on the agenda, the policy choice, which may emanate from the city council to ensure consistency with its subsidiary boards is a, is a concern, the other one being that, the one thing that I would caution is that if one of the commissioners is meeting via a teleconference or under the new Brown Act rules under AB 2449, those laws are clear that any, any way that the commissioners participate, everyone has to, so if one of you all are participating via Zoom, I would, I would say that it's pretty safe to say that we then could not prohibit anyone else from doing so, and so the, yeah, and so the-
Question on that, we were able to call in for council meetings, oh, Rebecca?
Since the rules have changed, I did consult with our city clerk to ask what would happen in a situation where one of the commissioners was traveling and wanted to participate remotely, and I was told that at this time, the direction from council is that that's not an option for any of the commissioners, it is for council members with a lot of advanced preparation and notice posting and availability of a public space wherever they are.
All right, it's, obviously, we need some discussion on this, it's just a motion to agendize, can we talk about how we're Zooming or not Zooming?
Why don't we maybe talk with staff and bring back something so we can discuss it?
Okay, I make a motion, we have an agenda item.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Drew Leonard? I'm sorry, Commissioner Leonard. Commissioner Peak?
Sure.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, why not? Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to the main item at hand here, who's presenting this? Anybody?
Yes, you have me this evening presenting it for you.
All right, would you like to do a staff report?
Yes.
I guess you've got all the details on there, I'll let you just take it away.
Thank you, Chair, so this evening, the purpose of our meeting tonight is to hear the improvements under coastal development permit 23-17 for the replacement and upgrade of an existing crosswalk along Pacific Coast Highway. If I may have the next slide, please. To refresh everyone's memory on this one, this was last heard by the Planning Commission on the 20th of February, the item, the vote was to continue the item to a date uncertain, and there was a request for additional information on the justification for the crosswalk location and additional traffic safety measures being considered in the vicinity. On February 28th, 2024, the applicant Caltrans did submit such a memo that's included in your packet, and they went through the additional information on the project, the justification, and then also related the project to the relevance of the city's PCH highway safety study that was conducted in 2015. Next slide, please. This is a vicinity map and aerial photo, the red square highlights the project area. This is a closer shot of that area, if I may have the next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, this is the current condition right now, so the way this works is you have the yellow lights that are on the arm that comes from the pole there, those lights are constantly flashing, there's a crosswalk, it is not, if you will, layman's terms, I'm not an engineer, but it's not really controlled, it's just flashing lights and you're waiting for someone to step off the curb, and there is no control to the pedestrian to tell them when or when not to stop off, to step off the curb. Next slide, please. The project will consist of the removal of the existing two 35-foot-high signal poles, there'll be two new poles that are 35-foot-high to replace those two, and each of those poles will have a traffic signal on them, and when I say traffic signal, it would mean your typical three lights, a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The installation of four 10-foot poles, two of which will have safety signaling for vehicles, and the other two will have pedestrian crossing timers. The crosswalk will be restriped in kind, there'll be a new cabinet installed for the controllers for this project. The existing service cabinets will be removed and replaced, and there'll be also a new underground conduit to power the controller and signals and the associated cable to connect the existing controller for the signal synchronization into this project. If I may have the next slide, please. This slide has a lot of detail on it, but essentially shows in the boxes where the new, new poles and the cabinets will be located on the project area. Next slide, please, and this is that same thing in plan view, if I may have the next slide. This is just an example, obviously, there won't be a turning moment associated with this project, but you can see that you'll have your more common poles with the traffic signal mounted to the pole, so now, the way this will function is when someone wants to cross the street, they're going to push the button to cross, they'll wait while the lights essentially do their thing. So, you'll have a green light that will then go to a yellow light and then to a red, and then the other opportunity here is that once the Signal Sync project is completed, when you push that button, it's tied into the wider network, is my understanding, and we will have, it'll, you won't have the issue that was raised, I know this was raised at the last meeting as well as previous meetings, concerns because it's, say, the Malibu Inn Hotel, the concern there with the valets constantly pushing the button and affecting the traffic on PCH, ideally, that will not be an issue because of the way this is tied into other signals through the Signal Sync project. If I may have the next slide, please. As we mentioned previously, the project consists of roughly 150 working days, if this project's approved, it's expected that Caltrans will seek approval from the city manager to do overnight construction activity to minimize impacts to Pacific Coast Highway, and once again, that's something that per our code requires the city manager to review and allows him to be the issuing authority. If I may have the next slide, please. Staff recommends approval of the proposed project with the conditions that are contained in the resolution in your agenda packet. I have with me this evening representatives from Caltrans available, as well as our Public Works Director, if there are any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. We have a speaker slip for an applicant and a small handful of-
Chair Hill, before we call speakers, would you take disclosures, please?
Let's do that, disclosures, down from the end, Dennis.
I talked to Lee on the phone last week about what we were talking about, about having people here, and I got to have to tell you that it's absolutely wonderful that all of you have come tonight, that's a big deal, I want to thank Chair Frost and Director DeBeau for helping us do that, and welcome.
Thank you. Skylar?
None, spend a lot of time driving on the highway.
True. None, none for me?
None.
Okay, so we have, we have, we have one speaker slip for an applicant, for, right, and you'll have, you'll get 15 minutes, you can divide it up if you have others that you want to also have participate, and then we have a small handful of public speakers in addition, so with that, let's go ahead with the applicant, you can reserve any portion of that 15 minutes for rebuttal after all the other speakers have spoken, and welcome, and thank you for being here.
All right, good evening, Commissioners, thank you, my name's Lee Haber, I'm with Caltrans, District 7, I'm the Chief Safety Officer in the Division of Transportation, Safety and Operations. I want to introduce a few folks that are here with me tonight for this project, to my left, we have Mr. Abdi Saghafi, Office Chief, Office A, one of his staff, Osama Assad is online with us, Osama is the Senior Engineer for Route 1, we also have Amir Al Sharif, Office Chief for Traffic Design, Oswald Elizondo, Senior Electrical Engineer in Traffic Design with Amir, we have Samantha Venegas, Project Manager for this project. We are here to ask for your approval of a coastal development permit for this project. This project is to upgrade that crosswalk location where you have continuously flashing yellow beacons to a pedestrian signal. Next slide, please. I'm able to run it before you, there we go, thank you. Okay, so this project purpose, we are here to implement item 14 from the Malibu Pacific Coast Highway 2015 Safety Study, this item 14 was to upgrade this location to a HAWK, which is also known as a pedestrian hybrid beacon, at the time this report was put together in 2015, HAWK was what was being used for the terminology that is now used as a pedestrian hybrid beacon. The item here, we have two photos on the bottom, you can see what you're facing, northbound traffic and southbound traffic of this location, so you can see the continuously flashing yellows, this project will take it to a consistent item for this stretch of roadway with a pedestrian signal. The next slide will provide you a map and show you some additional information, in addition, there will be a place for motorists to make U-turns at this location with this signal that is implemented there. We do not have an exact date of when the crosswalk was placed, we know that the flashing yellow beacons appear to have gone in approximately 15 years ago. This map, if you start at the south end, we have Carbon Canyon, working our way north, we have several coastal access points as well as existing crosswalks with a pedestrian signal, we then reach the existing crosswalk here with these flashing yellow beacons, which is then followed by two separate pedestrian signal locations, and then we reach Cross Creek Road at the northern end. This specific location, we've gone through this area in November, November 28 specifically, with Rob DeBeau, City Public Works Director, we are also out in the field with Captain C2 of LA Sheriff, this is part of our efforts following the crash in October, we talked specifically about this location and its importance for pedestrian safety in there, I've had discussions with sheriff staff, they've told me that this is an important addition, the area is heavily used, especially during the summer, when Malibu receives many visitors from both around California and around the world, and so this will both help your motorists, your users, your pedestrians, local residents here, as well as those people visiting us here in California. Next slide, please. So, this is our location today, you can see that on the top photo, on the left, we have a pedestrian signal that is to the south, and on the right, we have the next signal that is to the north. This is a unique situation in that stretch of roadway where we have continuously flashing yellow beacons. One thing I want to point out, driving is a visual activity, so as the driver is operating that motor vehicle, they're looking ahead to make decisions, and these things provide input and aspects for the motorists, the driver, to make decisions. and these things provide input and aspects for the motorists, the driver, to make decisions. They come to this location, you have continuously flashing yellows, there's nothing completely clear, other than them looking for a pedestrian to cross. And so pedestrians can be stuck there, trying to find an opportunity to cross. Motorists can be ignoring them and going through, or you have someone that suddenly sees a pedestrian and slams on their brakes and gets rear-ended by another motorist. Okay? So those are the aspects we're working to correct here. Next slide, please. All right. So moving to a pedestrian signal, I want to walk through, there's several items here that this upgrade will cover. We have three Federal Highway Administration-proven safety countermeasures. On the left, we have the pedestrian hybrid beacon. That's what was originally called for. We have a series of safety benefits of crash reductions that come from a pedestrian hybrid beacon alone. This project, though, with going to a full pedestrian signal, will get the additional benefits of the retroreflective tape around the perimeter of the signal. That will give motorists that visual acuity that there is a traffic signal at that location. And then the next item is the safety benefits that come from a full signal head with yellow, green, and red signals. So if you're driving, you're coming down, there's a pedestrian there that pushes a button, you're going to get a change over time, and it will be tied in with a city signal synchronization project. That light will then go to yellow, so you'll have a yellow warning for the drivers to make their time to get through. Then it will go to red, then the pedestrian will get the notice that they can cross. They'll have ped countdown heads, and then the signal cycle will revert. That's the intent. So again, we're here to ask for your approval of this coastal development permit. The department's put a lot of effort forth. We have a project schedule and delivery that we are working hard to meet, and we want to get this back on track to move this project out to construction as quickly as we can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Haber. And you have, oh, I didn't catch what was on the clock there.
9:30.
About--
Still going.
Nine minutes, 20 seconds or so.
Nine minutes, 35 seconds.
All right. So first, we'll hear three minutes from Bill Kelly and followed by Michael Osterman. I guess everybody's pretty close to the front already, so. Welcome, Mr. Kelly. What's on your mind?
I live four doors away from where this is going to be, and I just want to tell you, I've been there 50 years, and I've been the president of 42 units in that building, Malibu Outrigger, for 32 of the last 37 years. And I speak for the, all the homeowners tonight. And if you have any questions afterwards, I'd be glad to answer them. I've observed the crosswalk, and no one in our building uses the crosswalk. People would rather run across the street, run into the middle of the street to get to the other side of the street. People coming, we have parking up on the top of the building across the street that we rent, and people come there and they have to walk up to the light at Nobu or run across the street. I see so many people almost get killed, stand in the middle of the street. The traffic on the inner lane to the curb sees people coming off the sidewalk, but the person on the other side coming does not see it in the fast lane, if one's slower or one's fast, in the fast lane. They can't see the people coming until they get there. And that, by that time, the party from the sidewalk has moved into the traffic, into the walkway. And there, I've seen so many rearenders there that it's unbelievable. It's not safe. This is the best thing that could ever happen. I'll tell you, if you haven't checked with the Sheriff's Department, we have second, third, and fourth floor, which have hallways which face the street. And in my time there, about every two or three months, the sheriff sends a car with two people in it, a man and a woman, and they're out of a uniform. And then they have two motorcycle policemen sit across the street on the ocean side in the driveway of 22506. And they take turns going across the street each way. And the motorcycle policemen sit there, and the cars don't stop, and they don't do a traffic travel time. They usually do it from 10 to 11:30, something 12 o'clock. And they write a lot of tickets. And I've watched. It's not safe. Nobody, people coming from the hotel, people going to the market across the street. It's something that I'm glad you considered, and it was put in after we dropped the electric lines on Carbon Beach Underground.
Mr. Kelly, your three minutes are up, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we got your gist there. So we've got now Michael Osterman, followed by Chris Frost.
Gentlemen, I have a house at 21423 PCH. I've been there for 40 years. I also had a business at 22601 PCH for 27 years. Coincidentally, now both of those areas have these walks. The one at 21423, across from La Costa, just what the gentleman is talking about, push the button, red light, you walk across, perfect. The one that's across from Liquor Store now that we want to replace, I remember when that was first put in, going to the same question or same comment, the sheriffs used to sit there, and they would write ticket after ticket after ticket. It needs to be a stop sign, stoplight. I can't tell you in the 40 years, I mean, most of you have been here longer than that, most of you. How many people have died on PCH, especially in those two places, well, especially at La Costa? Caltrans was gracious enough to give us a light at La Costa. No more problems. I find it ludicrous that we're talking about this. This is safety of our community. I don't think Caltrans plans to double-deck the 101. I don't think they plan to build a freeway across Mulholland. This is a freeway. They're going to be controlling this anyway shortly. Why not make it easier for them? Why not start it now? The residents know what's going on, and most of them now have slowed down and pay attention. Got nothing to do with all the people that come from the valley. It's a freeway for them. It needs to stop. It needs to be slowed down. This is a gift from Caltrans. They're paying for it. I mean, I just don't understand what the discussion is. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I support this.
All right. Thank you. Chris, followed by Ryan Embry.
Well, those two pretty much covered most of what I have here, but, you know, I also want to say that this signal will tie into the signal synchronization system that Lee was talking about, and will allow Caltrans to better control traffic. And I believe for the last four months, all we've been talking about is safety on PCH. I mean, that's been probably 80% of the discussion in the community. You go to the market, go to the gas station, you come here, it's safety. And here, we're, like the man said, getting a gift from Caltrans. We're not paying for this. This is on their dime. And I don't know. Do you look a gift horse in the mouth? I don't. And I just, I consider this to be a done deal. It should be a done deal. The point that Michael made and Bill made about the fast lane rarely seeing the pedestrians starting out from the crosswalk, that's one big problem. The other big problem is when you drive through there, we have all seen people standing in the middle of the coast highway, because they've run to the middle, they've gotten to the middle, and then they realize they can't get back across, they can't go this way, they can't go that way. So they're standing out there like this. And here's another problem. If they're standing out there, you got a car in the number-one lane, and you're in the number-two lane, you can't see them. So the rearenders, same issue, people suddenly stopping, seeing somebody out there, figuring they need to stop because they're in the crosswalk, and you got an accident. I just feel like there's no downside to this, and it's a safety issue that's much needed in that area. Plus, it slows the whole highway down. Slowing the highway down is a major issue right now, so this is a step in the right direction. So I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Ryan Embry, followed by Norm Haney. And then after Norm, we'll go to, if anybody's on Zoom.
Thank you. Ryan Embry, former Chair of the Public Safety Commission ages ago. I wanted to have you maybe verify, one of the comments was that this is not going to be a future cost to the city, and it will be excluded from a city's memorandum of understanding on maintenance, repairs, and upgrades, replacements of traffic signals. Because this, there's no city intersecting street for this project, and it's an existing facility, as it is now electrified. So that's one, exempt from the maintenance, electrical, electricity, the whole operating agreement there. Second is that it's designed with embedded battery backups, because this is a red light signal with the perimeter markings that you'll all have to stop at if the electricity goes out right there. Just one place on PCH, or just one signal doesn't have power, everybody's supposed to stop there. Now, we'll see. We kind of know that they don't. But the rest of the signals do have battery backup. If it's not built in, this is the time to build it in and not modify it later. Maybe the big battery can go underneath the sidewalk somewhere or in the control cabinet. That brings me to the control cabinet. This will be so-called interconnected to the Transportation Management Center, but for it to function properly and not make all of PCH come to a screeching halt because somebody just decided to push the button, it needs to respect the flow and platoons of traffic on PCH and look for gaps in traffic for an optimum time so that you can do the crossing event, because this is a long event. They didn't tell you how many seconds it's going to be to cross 100 feet of right-of-way. It could be 20, 25 seconds just for that. I don't know, maybe you can speak to that. The future programming of it is whatever it is. So whatever's said tonight is all really subject to change. That synchronization, the gaps in traffic, that's going to make it or break it. They're talking about the height of the poles. I think the poles, I don't know if you can put the picture back up, but included safety lighting at the top. I think that's what's there now. And if the poles need that at the signals, or if they need it at the crosswalk, maybe over the crosswalk, and not where these new signals need to be farther back on each side of it. The poles and the structure and the conduits, there probably need to be extra conduits to put in some maybe low-voltage components for future cameras, for whatever purpose, to cover one camera for each lane in each direction. And if we're going to be putting up poles, this is the time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My comments tonight are basically, what is there is dangerous, should have never been put in the way that it's currently put in. Caltrans putting it in is responsible for the accidents that have occurred there, and needs to be changed. That change is either eliminated completely, altogether, or put it in properly, where you have proper stoplights and you have proper timing. I'm really not going, I'm not an expert on traffic engineering, so I'm not going to talk about whether it's necessary for calming traffic. I'm going to leave that up to the professionals, that all they do is figure those things out. But it's clear to me that you either put it in right with the proper stoplights, and just by pushing the button doesn't necessarily give you the right to cross. That's where, that's where the traffic engineers have to determine when it's appropriate to allow people to cross and when it's not. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Norm. Do we have any Zoom speakers?
Just one raised hand from Elena Eager.
Elena, go ahead and speak. We'll tell you if we can hear you. Are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead. We've got three minutes.
Thank you. Chair and Commissioners, the MRCA supports your staff's recommendation, and we sent a letter late this afternoon regarding the saying. And the other comment I would like to make is that in your earlier comments, I would say that if you want to see people on Zoom, all you have to do is enable them to show their face. So you can hear me disembodied, or I can show my face, and we can talk, "in quotation marks," through Zoom. There's just no reason for that to be an obstacle. So I wanted to make that comment, and with that, I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll definitely consider that, although there has been a lot of history here about whether people show their face or not. So that's not up to us tonight. All right. So--
There was another raised hand, if you wanted to hear from them. Howard Rudsky.
Howard Rudsky. Can we hear you, Howard? You should be unmuted.
Howard, you should see a pop-up to ask you to unmute.
Okay, well, let's move ahead here. Mr. Haber, if you or any of your folks would like to make any comments in rebuttal or in addition to, based on anything you've heard, you've got a lot of time left. How much time, nine minutes and something, right?
Nine minutes and 34 seconds.
All right. Thank you. Just real quickly, our staff reviewed the questions here. Maintenance will be by the state. There will be a 45-foot setback in advance of the signal to help with occlusion, so people will be able to see people go there. It'll be approximately 24 seconds for crossing time. And yes, there will be extra conduits. They're considered a nominal impact to the infrastructure, and the safety lighting's included. So do you have any further questions at this point?
We probably will, but go ahead and sit down, and we'll call you up as needed. Or you, either way, stay up here if you'd like, because, or--
I have some questions.
Okay. So we're going to bring it back up to the table here. I would like to make some summary comments before-- What? Closing the public hearing, with the exception of you're here to answer questions that we have. We're bringing it back up to the commission table. Let me just, a couple summary comments, and you guys can disagree if you want after, when I'm done here, or add more, whatever. But yeah, I think we're, none of us up here are anti-safety. Obviously, we all want to see things. The problem we had at the last meeting is that we felt like we have a job here that involves dealing with evidence, and there were stuff that we didn't have in front of us. We have much more evidence now, at least in my view. But the way this happened publicly was problematical, the way the city management and the council were, seemed to be taking their cues about what happened in our last meeting from social media, and saying that somehow we didn't want safety and that we, I don't know if they even watched our meeting, some of them. Councilmember Stewart, in the public comment at the meeting, said that we didn't hold a fair hearing. We did not deny the application, as the public seemed to be saying. We just said, we need more information. I think we all expressed positive interest in doing something along these lines. We just wanted to see more. So it's our duty and the public's interest to make the decisions based on the evidence. And I think that was, we all sincerely and impartially looked at it and just didn't think we had enough. Now, I do have some questions still about the evidence, but I think we'll get these, and maybe I'll save some of mine. And Skylar, you've got something off the top of your head.
Ryan brought up a good point about backup system for power for these, this and the other lights. As a signal synchronization-- As this signal synchronization project evolves and gets implemented, is that going in, yes or no?
Yeah, so we will have backup. Our typical pattern has, to my recollection, and Oswald's confirming it for me, is we put power backups in the system. We have battery backups inside.
Is the battery backup just going to be a flashing red light or is the battery backup going to be a functional signal?
My experience is they've been functional signals in the past until the battery runs out. That's typically what they've been.
And how long does that battery last?
I think it's going to vary. I've seen stuff that'll last approximately nine to 12 hours.
Okay. Well, that's better than none.
On that note, is it possible to do something that goes 48 hours? I mean, when we have, when we have emergencies here, whether they're fires or.
Right. You know, I understand. Yeah. I've had discussions with a number of folks in the community. Part of our efforts here, Obdi, myself, and other members of our team have been up here on a number of days doing field work with folks. And so we've been out there and we did a ride along with Public Work, Public Safety Commission, Public Works Director, and the sheriff. And so there's been some discussions. I understand that the city's interested and has a request for ability to hook generators and other things up to these so as to run them. So I don't know, Oswald, if that's in the plan set at this point in time. So we can do that. Okay. So I think, you know, we will work with you to get those things in. If they're not in there now, I think that we can commit to that. We have a funding deadline where we have to get this project up and into our system to get it out, to maintain the funding that we've got set. So my goal here tonight is to move this through, to get the coastal development permit approved so we can proceed. I think if we need to get this in, Amir, Oswald, is that feasible to work with them and add some details? Okay.
And as a general note, the battery backup is something we need throughout the city.
Right. And that's a typical standard. It's been that way, I'm kind of thinking 20-plus years. Remember when we were having the problems in early 2000s with brownouts? And so at that point, we went in, there were large shifts to LED lights to reduce the power consumption on our signal heads and also to put in battery backups.
Rob, did you have some more info on that?
Yes. Commissioner, good evening. Yeah, all the signals from McClure Tunnel to approximately Canaan have the emergency generator transfer switch. And so the situations where the battery backups go dead, we have the ability to switch over, put some emergency generators connected to there to provide more power. The, all the signals with the signal sync project, including this one, will have a brand-new signal cabinet and will have upgraded batteries that will last, like Lee said, approximately eight to 12 hours. We have seen that if you go at the flash, they can, they can go substantially longer, like 36 hours. So what we have done and kind of like we're, we're kind of looking and working with the sheriff's department, seeing what, which signals can be put on flash when they feel safe and extend the batteries. And in turn, give us a little bit more time to make sure we have those, those backup battery, backup generators out to those fields and making sure those signals are operating. So that's kind of our process and how we're, we handle those signals when it goes out.
Okay.
Question from John.
Yeah, I, on the battery, on the generators, it's been my experience and just casual observer of the signals around Point Dume, that it takes quite a while for the battery, for that generator to be hauled out to the signal, chained to the thing and hooked up, like 12 hours. And only rarely are they used. Is that going to change or is it just the same deal? You'd have to drag them out there, hook them up manually, turn them on, fuel them, et cetera.
So that's not the policy we have and that's not the procedure we have. When we know that there's going to be a power outage, we prep those generators, we get them ready. We don't know what, what signals or how many signals or how many things that go out. So what we do is that once we hear that a signal is out, we have our maintenance staff be ready on call, ready to go out to the field, get the generators and hook them up. We have roughly 12 hours to make sure that happens. That's sufficient time for us to do that. So what you're seeing is our time as our maintenance crews actually coming out to the field, the proper time with the procedures we have in place to make that connection.
Couple of questions on the example signal rendering that was put up when Richard was doing his presentation. Couple of questions that came up. Is there going to be any street parking that's going to be lost for this switchover?
Will this switch over? No.
And then the other one is because we're putting in a left turn and a U-turn lane, how far back will that be going to double yellow because that whole entire center median is used for left turns and U-turns all throughout that section of PCH? And, you know, those lights will kind of, seems like it'll encourage people to just crank a U-turn because they see a light, you know, 100 yards ahead of them and stuff. How far back will, do you understand that question?
Well, if I can, if I can piggyback on that, we don't see in our materials, I don't think, any depiction of where the turn pockets would be and how they would interact with the turns. Is that, we, Rob, do you know that? Am I just not seeing what we had, but the whole, I guess the question too is, do the U-turns work in both directions? Turn pockets both ways?
Yeah. Oswald, do you have the pavement delineation plans with you or not?
Was that, did I just miss that? Was that in our packet?
I don't think.
Because I mean, thinking about how those turns are going to work, that's an important thing to sort out, make sure we're not.
I think there's a slide.
You have a slide on it?
It's just the city, the rendering.
I think it's the, it's the plan drawing.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, there's one drawing that's like an aerial view with a lot of notation on it.
He's going to pull it up.
It doesn't show it. Okay. So, yeah.
So I'm not seeing what you guys are describing on this drawing at all.
This is a signal and lighting plan.
So this doesn't show that?
I don't know if we have the pavement delineation and sign plan in here. Just my examination here quickly of looking these, you're going to be seeing approximately a 150-foot length U-turn pocket perhaps. I may be off. I'm gauging this right now on the fly. We will have to look closely at the double yellow striping. If you would like that longer than we have rendered here, that is something we can work out with your public works director.
I'd like to defer to probably public safety on that one.
Well, we would work with them.
Defer to Caltrans and just do it how you do it safely.
Let me just interject. This is, the first we heard there was any deadline was when Manager McClary said it at the council meeting last, at our last meeting, we didn't even, you know, weren't even hearing that. But, okay, so the U-, the pocket heading east, south in your view, that would turn into Colony Liquor. Is that correct?
No, it would, my understanding is we're going to sign up for U-turns only, not for left turns.
But then, then there's a real question about, and certainly, and certainly the pocket going northbound, I don't know that there'd necessarily be enough room on the ocean side.
Yeah.
To, for somebody to actually make that U-turn there.
And then in that case, we would have to look at a parking site removal for that to be a functional. But that, those are the few details that, you know, we're looking at. I can go back through it with our team to get specifics.
Now, on a U-turn, the light does not need to turn. You just do a U-turn anytime you feel like it.
No.
Okay. So how does the light turn unless somebody's pushing the button?
There would be loop detectors there as well.
There's a detector in the pavement.
Loop detector, it's got eyes.
If somebody pulls into left turn lane or into pocket, it automatically stops and you can hang a U-turn.
Yeah.
So every time somebody pulls in there, the highway's going to stop.
It has a timer on it.
Yeah, it has a timer. I pulled into one when I was coming up here, probably mid-December. One of the places to the south of this location, I made a U-turn there and I pulled into the U-turn pocket, left turn pocket to make that U-turn and the vehicle I was driving activated that signal. There were no pedestrians present.
So you would have to remove, what, two, three spaces on each side to, for that clearance?
Perhaps. There's a lot of driveways in that area, so I, they may even be marked red. And then the other, the other part I would add with that is if you've got driveways closely spaced, if you've got parked vehicles in there, that's going to make it harder for the motorists trying to get out. So you have a lot of usual occlusions to deal with. So I want to go back with our team. I may have misspoken when I said none. We may have to remove two or three, but this is a safety project and therefore this would be associated with the appropriate safety item. I would also need to do some review. I believe there was a legal change and I want to go back and look at it. There might have been a state law change that requires some removal of parking in advance of crosswalks for a certain distance. So I would need to do a double check on that.
You have, as far as your report does.
Hang on. Rob, you wanted to add on that point?
So I'm just looking at my fancy dancy Google Earth. And there is, there is a red curb that goes all between on the, the land side of PCH. There's red curb and driveways, red curb driveways all the way past the liquor store. And then on the other side, there is a fire hydrant, a red curb, a access ramp, a bus stop, and red curb going all the way and, and actually the driveways. So there's already no parking there already.
So, so maybe the legitimate conclusion would be they might have to remove maybe a couple more spaces depending on how.
I don't think so. I don't, yeah. Based on my opinion, no, they wouldn't have to remove any parking whatsoever.
Do we, do we know those are legal red curbs? We've got a lot of red paint that people have bought over the years. Well, I'd say 50% of the highway that's red isn't painted by Caltrans.
So the red curbs that were affecting the U-turn are legitimate red curbs.
Question from Drew. So where this car is parked, where the controller box is going to be, that is kind of like where the speed trap is set. Motorcycle cop sits right there watching that light.
We shouldn't have speed traps.
But, he sits, well, that's where the, it seems like that, you know, where the stop here line is going to go, is we're going to definitely at least lose that one spot right there, I would assume.
With the photo with the red curb there, I'm not.
There's a hydrant there, so that's out.
Where the, see with the controller box right by the car? It shows it on the plan too.
That's a mailbox.
There's an existing controller box, it looks like, to the right of that, to the vehicle. Is that a mailbox back there?
All right.
It looks like the controller.
Question on U-turns?
Okay. Well, hang on. Scott, John?
The staff report says there's three crosswalks within a half mile with lights after this one goes in. Do they all have U-turns and why is there a necessity for a U-turn, that many U-turns on a, with no place to go but up and down the highway? In other words, every time somebody goes into a U-turn lane, you're going to stop the highway with your sensor. If there's three of them within a half a mile, why do you need to make three U-turns in a half a mile?
So I think part of what I would share with you is when we did our review with the sheriff's department, the sheriff's deputies that were out there, some of their biggest challenges were people making U-turns suddenly. So by providing a space to do these at this frequency allows a motorist to drive to a spot where they can make a U-turn in a more controlled environment rather than just making one randomly on the highway.
Currently, is there anything to stop somebody from doing a U-turn anywhere there anyways? I mean, you could make a U-turn anywhere in the 1,500 feet between all of these.
We can go through and double yellow.
No, I'm just saying that I don't, I don't think that that's the intention of what anybody wants here. I think that many of the people that live on either side or have a business on either side want the ability to make that turn.
Right.
And have functioned that way for many years. I think that the, the reason why we're back here tonight in general is because I don't think any of us understood from Caltrans why that stopped, why that crosswalk was needed. And we had some testimony here from some of the public that says, you know, he just said, "None of the people in my building use the crosswalk."
That's because it's not safe.
No, I under, I understand that. But, all right, hey, Paul, the other question with that, is it not better to move the crosswalk closer to where that building is or closer to where the coastal access is, where you know that you have the higher frequency of pedestrians? That's what I didn't understand. So, because it seems like it's in the zone where there's less people. Would it not be better being located where you have a higher frequency of people? That's the whole reason why we're here tonight.
Well, so we did some quick data polls from Streetlight Data, which is an online source that we use under a license, purchased license. It's recognized during the summertime, this crosswalk is seeing usage of over 50 pedestrians an hour on a Sunday. That's what we're getting into. We had not gone into a complete reengineering and we took it with the safety study from 2015 that went through this entire stretch of the highway as well as the entire stretch of Route 1 within the city of Malibu and looked at what that team came up with. There was nothing in there about relocating the crosswalk. It was about providing additional safety features at that crosswalk. It's been there for a long time. I will trust the engineers that have placed it there. I'm looking at it on a static view right now, just on this photo. My recollection is there may be some highway curvature in that area and so this may be one of the better locations to do the curvature there to allow motorists to see the crosswalk. I understand, Craig, you may disagree, but that's been the experience with it. I think, Oswald, Amir, do you have anything to add or Osama? I know Osama's online, so, Rob, are you? Rob, go ahead.
So, so good evening, once again. I want to, first off, I got a, I got an email from Supervisor Horvath's office. They wanted to kind of provide support for the CDP for Caltrans.
I think we all got that email.
Did you get that? Okay, good. Secondly, I want to talk a little bit about the functionality of how we're looking into improving safety on PCH with the PCH signalization system. What you have to, what you have to realize is that we're putting in a computerized synchronization system that will actually control traffic on PCH. So if you're on one side of PCH, let's say by Carbon or by Big Rock, and you're driving through at the constant speed, posted speed, let's say 45, you will hit all the green lights. If, if you.
Unless someone's at the crosswalk.
No, because you, because.
Or doing a U-turn.
No, because that will have the priority.
Okay.
So, so what happens is somebody might have to wait several minutes.
Hold on, let me finish. So, so you have these long segments on PCH. Mr. Haber, Caltrans and I, as we're out there walking, we, there is long sections, long street segments on PCH that are very long, that will give drivers the ability to drive at fast speeds in between those segments. So if you have shorter segments that break up PCH, you have the ability to control that traffic. We have the ability to kind of have that section flow through there on PCH a lot better. Now, we looked at Carbon and then we looked at all the signals. The next signal is almost 3,000 feet away. So we're, right now, my team is actually looking to try to do a new pedestrian signal where there's a beach access approximately about 2,000 feet from, from Carbon.
Now, you're getting to what will be one of my questions.
So, but. So, so that, that will break up that segment. And then the next one would be this one, which will be another 15, 1,500 feet away. And then the next one, there's, so there's a good consistency of street segments that we can actually control with the synchronization system. The computer will do a good job of kind of making sure traffic is flowing well. We have the ability to, if someone is speeding in that section, they are likely to hit red lights.
All right. We'll get back to that, but I got guys chomping at the bit here. Wait.
I have a question for Rob and then I want to make a comment after that. Caltrans seems to be offering to direct traffic to these signals to do U-turns and go double yellow as far back as we want. We're under a state of emergency here. What would the city public works want?
I kind of agree with Caltrans that we have to look and identify areas where it's safe to make safe U-turns. That was one of the things in the PCH safety study that they recommended or they identified was probably the number one safety turning movement is making those U-turns on, on PCH. So what we've seen has vehicles make U-turns on PCH in the number one lane. So that's the slow lane going all the way over and then make it all the way across. We see it all the time. And so the ability to kind of have safe, controlled. controlled sections where we actually make U-turns is a safer movement. Now, can you, is there a way to make sure that someone doesn't go 200 feet away to make that other turn, make the U-turn? Well, I mean, that's, that's how the striping is right now on PCH. You have that two-way left turn pocket in there. So if it's two, if the turn pocket is 150 feet long and if someone goes 200 feet away and makes that U-turn, I mean.
It's a start, though.
Right. Yes. So.
Can I just make a comment now? I had a question first and then I had a comment.
So in my opinion, you know, having that, having that ability to have controlled places where you can make U-turns is a safer traffic moving.
I completely agree with that, and I would like to hopefully try to steer Caltrans to try this. You know, I experienced people just cranking U-turns left and right all over the place and having those dotted lines where it's semi-legal just seems to be a problem. And hopefully we could get consensus from the council here, or the commissioners here to go for that.
I just don't see how people pull into driveways and do other stuff without, by doing that.
Hey, this is not on, on our, on the table for us right now.
They're offering it.
It's not in front of us. Yeah, it's John's, that's not in front of us right now. They can, they're hearing you and they can take that idea away and think about where and how that might work, but that's not for us to decide tonight. John, go ahead.
And you might want to consider asking East Malibu if they can turn into their driveways.
Yeah, okay. We're not, we're not talking about that plan tonight.
Now, in analyzing this, one of the main reasons we, we wanted it to come back with information is placement. Okay? And if, if we go through your staff report, you have three turn lanes in a half a mile. That means 126 crosswalks in Malibu. Okay? Nobody's ever going to get home. It's 21 miles long. And we have sections of Malibu that are much more dangerous than this section that have none. And so the real question is, and for example, and I don't know if you're familiar, that much familiar with Malibu, we have a nightclub called Moon Shadows. We have wrecks there every 10 minutes. Okay? Exaggeration, but true. And we said, well, wouldn't it be better at Moon Shadows? So my question is, is there a plan by Caltrans to put crosswalks in the areas that need them rather than the areas that exist? And this 2015 report, as I understand it, recommended the system that's there now. Is a HAWK system what is there now?
No, no, it didn't. But, but, but you, so your question.
No, 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 don't answer my question. What is a HAWK system? Does it have a stoplight?
So a HAWK system is basically the previous name for what we call a pedestrian hybrid beacon. There's an existing pedestrian hybrid beacon between Los Flores and Carbon Canyon. That is a.
Lacoste.
Yeah, Lacoste area. And that has three lights up there. It goes through a different cycle of, it moves to a wigwag. I'd have to recall.
But it actually has a stoplight like this one?
It is not this type. No. This, so what you have here is a flashing yellow. The pedestrian signals north and south are standard signal heads with green, yellow, and red. The pedestrian hybrid beacon, or a HAWK, is a three lamp or three-head signal, and it goes through different cycles. It's got about eight steps to it. And reviewing some materials, there can be some differences in how they are operated and how they're viewed. Given the discussions we've had with the sheriff and staff in the field and looking at this length in our field reviews, this area, we all agreed, we need to come through and do this. We've had this in process for a number of years. I recall looking at documentation, I think from 2019, to get this project moving.
Okay, so my question is, can you tell us where the other ones are?
So the other ones, at this point, I don't have that off the top of my head. We are working, we're working with Rob.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. One thing at a time. Rob, Rob has some answer for you, John?
Just, just real quick. The city has a project where we're looking to do improvements at Big Rock and across from Moon Shadows, which includes a crosswalk in that location. So we have funding. We're moving forward with that. We're actually starting the design of that. We're also looking at the design of Los Flores and Rambla. The whole intersection is being redesigned. So we're looking at that. I did mention that we're looking into adding a new pedestrian signal, which is approximately 2,000 feet west of Carbon. And we're looking at other opportunities to do those. We're working closely with Caltrans to identify other areas where we can do that. And so I just wanted to point that out, that we are looking at that and doing that.
Yeah, well, that's not really what I was asking. I was asking, is there a comprehensive plan, like the 2015 plan, to identify, not just off the top of your head, you know, this, this.
Vice Chair, he just told you. He just told you. Listen to it.
No, he did not tell me.
Gentlemen, 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 gentlemen.
Okay, the, the, the question is specifically, could the city today identify the needed crosswalks and lights to make Malibu Highway PCH safe? Or is it, I think that one, I think that one, you mentioned brought Moon Shadows, et cetera, like they did apparently in 2015?
So all the things that we're talking about are included in the 2015 PCH safety study. We are implementing all those projects, which includes those signals that we talked about. So yes, everything is identified and we're looking through.
So, so if they're in the 2015 study, the question we had at the last meeting is, why this one? Okay? Because we all drive up and down Coast Highway. We all see places that apparently are used much more and are much more dangerous. And we're starting at the liquor store crosswalk. Why did we pick this one instead of Moon Shadows?
John, the reason why that shows this one is because.
I'm asking him, aren't you?
I can tell you right now by looking at it. It doesn't have the three lights on it. They want it to have three lights.
There is no light at all at Moon Shadows.
But that's not in front of us.
All right, John.
No, it is in front of us. I'm asking a question about the process of the city. Actually, I would like to call Chris Frost up and ask him the question.
Okay, all right.
Chair, is that?
That's okay, but let me first just say, we do have evidence that said there were more rear-end collisions at this location than other places.
We were shown.
Because of the nature of, as, as we've heard described to us, right?
We were shown in a prior meeting, a, a map that had like red areas where things happened.
And numerical.
This was not it.
Numerical tables showed that there were rear-end collisions here.
Yes. Okay, so my question is.
Can you ask him a limited question?
No, I could ask him what I need to know. You're not here speaking for the Safety Commission, correct? Because you haven't had a meeting on this, correct? So I'm asking you as a person with, you know, you can tell me you're speaking for the Safety Commission, but I'd like to know how, what authorized you to do it?
Okay, as a matter of disclosure, I have been out with Lee on the highway several times, from one end to the other and back. So.
I understand that. So you're, you're an individual that went out with him.
No, I went out as a Public Safety Commissioner.
Were you assigned by the Public Safety Commission to do that?
No, I was told I was going out with the city.
Okay, so if I go visit a house, I'm assigned to it?
No, John, what's your question?
My question is, okay, here's, here's a problem, frustration we have, I have with the planning commission. We asked for input. We've asked many times for input on safety. And the city council has refused to give it to us on several occasions. And I don't want to mention what they are because we're going to hear one of them.
Refused to give it to the plant, to the Public Safety Commission, you're saying?
Refuse? We have never, ever, and I've been on the planning commission for, I don't know, decade or two. Too long is what.
All right, guys.
Mr. Smith has been on too long.
Come on, come on, come on. Hey, let's, let's keep it on track.
I have never had the Safety Commission come to us with any information. None. Okay? I have never, and we have asked many times, can we get comment from this, on Safety Commission? Staff has never referred this to you. So have you had a hearing in the last year on traffic lights on PCH? Or the last two years?
Yeah, I believe we have, but I'm, I'm seeing that from memory.
Okay, well, I'm wondering is, why, why do we have to have a delay hearing because we couldn't get information from the first staff report? Seven days after that, we get a staff report that's got two paragraphs and nothing from the Safety Commission. I assume, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just asking, wouldn't it be nice to, to know what you guys know? For us to make a decision? This is an opinion by him. I'm not asking you.
What is your, what's your, is that your question? I mean, of course, it would be, it would be nice if everybody knew all that's to be known.
Okay, but can you tell me as chairman, a longtime chairman of that commission, why you have never reported anything to the planning commission?
We've never been asked to.
Oh, yes, you have.
And so, and so Chair, I just want to.
John, excuse me for what?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
You, you guys asked me a question?
Chris, I'll go back to you. I just want to remind that the planning commission does not have, you know, authority over the Public Safety Commission.
I'm not saying they do. I'm asking a person.
You cannot delegate things to them. That is the, that is the realm of the, of the city council.
That is my point. Okay?
I think, I think that point has been sufficiently made.
So what we wanted to have come back to us was a report. We asked for specific verbatim. We got a paragraph and a half. Okay? And, and a quick thing on what a HAWK is. Now.
John, I don't think you need Chris up here, right? You've made a point. We're not asking for expertise for something that he has not.
Correct. And.
You can, you can go ahead and sit down.
And so Mr. Frost was not involved in the creation of the staff report. He is, I believe he is here as a, as a concerned resident, giving his experience and, and testimony. So he was not consulted by staff nor Caltrans on the drafting of the, of the staff report.
And, and I couldn't ask a city councilman either because they're, they're, they're not quorum here, right?
And so once again, I would, I would advise against that. The, the item before you all tonight is, is laid out in the staff report and resolution. It's not lost on me.
John.
Or anyone. I just want to try to center the conversation.
Okay, I'm centering the conversation.
Findings and resolution before you tonight.
I, I, I'm going to make a decision if I can, based on what I've been told about safety on Coast Highway and what we can do about it. Okay? And we've been presented with one crosswalk, and we asked, can you tell us, is this the best place for it out of all of Malibu? Okay? Out of all of Malibu? And we didn't get that answer. So that's the last question I have.
So, and, and.
Craig?
I would recommend that you take the concern about why doesn't the Public Safety Commission hear these things to council. Take it to them in the public comments, to council.
John, we're hap, we're happy to, we're happy to do whatever we can to further public safety. And if that means bringing stuff to us via council, that's fine.
All right, Chris, that's, thank you. We, we're not needing you right now.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Isn't that a bus bench up about 50 feet past the crosswalk?
Chair.
It is. We've discussed that. Yeah, we gotta just pointing that out. Yeah. Skylar wants to make a motion. I still have a couple of questions, but for sake of discussion, go ahead. What's your motion?
My motion is to approve the item as staff recommends.
Second. And we have a second from Commissioner Smith? All right. So let, just for the record, I want to ask a few questions, just for clarity here. One, I think I heard you mention that you were looking at another location further to the east between here and Carbon where the other coastal access is. Rob said that, right? Okay, Rob said that. Okay. Because, because our concern at the last meeting was why, following John, why was this the specific location? And what I'm seeing is the distance between Nobu and Nicholas Eteri is actually shorter than the distance between Nicholas and Carbon. So I'm thinking if we had to put one somewhere, it would be that, at that coastal access, not least because there's 75 or 100 empty parking spaces on the land side there all the time, all the time. So you could, if you had a crosswalk down at that coastal access, you could spread out the beach demand in Malibu in a way that some people go, oh, I can't park at Surf Rider, but there's 75 spaces back there. I can go to that bit of beach. Great. So I, all things being equal, I think there's more demand to put it there, but I think that also we need to fix the situation where it is too. So with that said, I'm still confused about the 2015 data and that the numbers that you gave us, again, in the, in the new report, say that the PHB, if I'm reading them right, is actually safer than the light with the yellow. And maybe, maybe these numbers just aren't organized right.
They, so that is an amalgamation of some different data points. So that the PHB was focused on just strictly changing an area where you had an uncontrolled crosswalk to control with a PHB.
Well, just, just to be clear, so it says the PHB, for example, says that is a 29% reduction in total crashes, whereas the yellow change is an eight to 14% reduction. What, how, why do those numbers not?
So we, the initial one was to take it to a HAWK.
Yeah.
Take it to a HAWK. HAWK has certain functionalities. There's additional benefits. And so we aren't going to be able to give you exact percentages because you're getting really an amalgamation of safety improvements there.
So you're saying it's additive, that the regular stoplight is safer than the HAWK?
Right. The regular signal will give you additional features. So you are going to get the yellow light, you're going to get the green light, you're going to get the red light as opposed to what you would get with a PHB or a HAWK. And then you will also have the retroflective border. And so the regular signal and the retroflective border go together. The exact percentages, I could not tell you what those would be because these had been separate instances, but we know they do combine and you get additional features. And then the PHB, that is a step up. So we're going one step up and then we're going above that.
And just for anybody who's looking at these numbers, when you say reduction in, 29% reduction, as compared to what? When there's no light there?
A crosswalk.
Just a plain crosswalk? Okay.
And, and this one is in a different circumstance because we have the yellow warning light there. But the, I, I think with the discussions we held with city staff and sheriff in the field, coupled with the comments from the public about the behaviors out there and the challenges, we saw, we did, with our reviews, we did both daylight and dark reviews on PCH. And, and we looked at these. And these are things we want to be coming in to fix, and that's why we're here to do that. And so as part of the other discussion with additional crosswalks, we are working with Rob and the city to identify additional features. The additional crosswalk location, that came up on the field on November 28th when we were out there at this specific site. Our team engineers are looking at it like, yes, we're open to that. Let's have a discussion. Let's look to move that forward. We're interested in doing this too. What we're coming forward with is this specific project of this location to move this portion forward and work on additional ones in future projects.
Now, how much, how much scope do we have here to be playing with this, I don't want to say playing with, but considering the signage, could we, for example, just to, for example, have signage on there that says, "Traffic monitored by camera" or something that is true because it is, we're looking, but we're, we're trying to impose a safety culture and give people some kind of message. Is there scope to add signage of any kind?
Yeah, there can be. We get into design issues with wind load on the mast arms and such. But what I would ask you to consider, this is a very active area. If you drive it, it's busy. I have not been up here in the summer yet. I recently, I've probably been here several decades ago.
That's because you can't get up the highway because of the traffic.
So, so, you know, I think the discussion I've had with the sheriff and staff is, this is a busy area in the summertime. And so what I would ask you to consider is, the more information is put out there at the driver, the less they're going to see. I don't want to give them sign overload. I want to keep them focused on, we have a pedestrian crossing here, we have a signal here.
Yeah.
Let's look for that. And, and that's what I would look to. I want to keep it, you know, down. Do I want to do additional signage? Yes. When we were out here on December 18th with the agency secretary, we had this, we stopped down at Carbon Canyon. You've got the, the sign down there for the corridor. That work, we are working to bring that sort of stuff back. And that's what we want to do. This is one piece on a long stretch of highway. And that's what we want to, we need to move this forward incrementally while we work on the additional. We have, Abdi Brat reminded me, you have transit stops here. One of the benefits, we want to have crosswalks near transit stops. It helps facilitate the use of transit, and it's going to help people safely cross to get to transit, which we want to do.
Yeah.
So those tie together. The next thing I would ask you to consider is, you know, part of our efforts, the 2015.
study, there were a lot of items in there that were to continue to additional feasibility studies. We're looking to advance those. We are working on a PCH master plan. That effort's being headed up by our planning department. We are working with city staff. We're going through the 130 item list. Our team is continuously working through that.
Okay, so there's more coming down the line.
There is more.
You guys are working together. So if, you know, for example, it's been mentioned here tonight, one of the, another, next spots on your list might be Moon Shadows, because, right, you, you do have a bus stop on the land side, it's kind of the bus stop to nowhere, and you have a history there of, of pedestrian deaths in front of, so if it takes you a couple of years before you get to actually putting the signal there, maybe a sign that says, that you could put up in a day, that says, you know, pedestrians do not cross the highway halfway, or, you know, do not pause in the center median, or, something that you could put up that would like, maybe save a life or two in a couple of years before you finally get the thing there. And as a general rule in Malibu, now, now I'm talking about-
Right, so I-
It's not in front of us, but-
Correct.
Craig, can we hear a little call?
Dennis.
I, I'm pretty embarrassed up here because we're talking about one thing, and that's it. That's why we're here. We're not talking about future. We're not talking about anything else. Hang on. We're not talking about another damn thing other than this light. That's what we need to focus on. We need to take a vote, and let's go home. We have Caltrans here, we asked them to come. The next time they come, they'll all be in a fistfight about who's not going to come, right? Because they're going to say no, and then they'll be in a fistfight in the office about who asked to go. So no, nobody, we haven't helped anybody.
You're right, you're right. I, I took a little bit further. My, my immediate question was, could we put some signage on this that would help?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. We're here for the light. Let's take the vote. That's all we have to do. Whatever the vote is, Rob, go ahead. You got, did you want some?
Why is he recognizing somebody?
No, I, I pointed at Rob already.
Okay, so my, my point is, is this is just awful. The fact that we've, we've been lambasted all week, or for two weeks, or however, 10 days, whatever it's been, let's take a vote, get this light fixed, let it work, do what it's supposed to do, it's part of the system, it's already, it's already there. And let me tell you another thing. If we, if for whatever reason this didn't go that way, as Lee told me, the light doesn't come out. There's no money to take it out. There's only money to put it into the system. Otherwise, it sits there. So when people say, well, just take it out, there's no money for that. And they're not going to do that because they're giving us this system, this system right now. So that's what we need to do. We need to take a vote, and let's get the heck out of here and go home.
All right, comment?
Well, hang on, Rob wanted to respond to something there, right? Did you, no, you're, you're, I thought, I thought I saw-
Well, in, in regards to like signing-
That's other stuff.
Yeah, that's, I can, I can, I can fill you in, or if someone wants to fill, wants, wants to get more information on what we're going to do with signals, I'll be happy to-
Sidebar, okay. All right, so John, you have a comment?
My comment is, I'm embarrassed, we're here eight years after it was recommended to put this in. And I'm embarrassed, we're, we did this because four girls got killed, and you drove down the highway and said, let's, how about that one, and how about that one? And what we need is not to talk about safety, is to do it. And I'm, as I mentioned to Chris earlier, I've been on this commission for 15, 20 years, never once, and we've asked many times, what does safety say about this? Never once can we get an answer because it's stopped at staff or city council. And to have one light fixed in eight years is criminal, okay? And I'm not calling you a criminal, but I'm calling our city council a criminal. They haven't, they haven't pushed this. We have, I've been here for 50 years, I can't tell you how little safety has been done in that time. And it's not because we have a bunch of deaths at one wreck, then all of a sudden we jump on this and put up some white tires and not, and give us a paragraph and a half staff report, and then criticize us for saying, asking questions.
Yeah, we, we need more from council, and with that, let's take a vote on what's in front of us.
And just, just for the record, the, the motion was staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Thank you.